Hi, sweetie.
Hello.
I'd like to call to order the work session on January fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen. We're all here. All right, let's go to the agenda items. So, item three point one, staff will present the general fund for the fiscal year two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and twenty. And of course, we're going to invite finance manager, finance manager, the budget and research, Lori Rickenrath. Lori?
Thank you. All righty, we're going to get started. Oops, I'm sorry, Julie.
That's okay, Mayor. Would it be all right if I made a few opening comments?
Oh, yes, and I think you told me that in my meeting.
That's okay, that's okay.
All right, city manager?
Well, welcome to two thousand and nineteen. The microphones are very loud. So, we're here this evening to, you know, continue our budget process and establish financial policies, resources, and expenditure priorities in advance of developing the annual budget or keys to our success. And we began this conversation back in October during the council retreat. The primary purpose of today is to provide information on the resources that will be available for the fiscal two thousand and twenty budget development and obtain your continued direction and feedback on our financial policies. We do practice fiscal conservatism here at the City of Goodyear, and this is reflected in all of our budget projections. And so what that means is that when we project fiscally conservative revenues and also fiscally conservative expenditures, they tend to cross. And you'll see that in our five-year projections. I'm also confident that we're very early in our current fiscal year process, and we are again conservative with what we believe our expenditures are and what the revenues will be, and that's why we typically have a large carry forward as we move forward into further budgets. So I want to conclude by saying that the City of Goodyear is very fiscally, very fiscally healthy when it comes to our budget, and I'm excited for Lori to share some of those numbers with you this evening.
Great. Can I just throw it to the floor? The council has any questions for you? You want to wave? Any questions?
No.
All right, then we're going to go right on. Go ahead.
All righty. Thank you all for the opportunity to come and talk to you about where we are in the budget process. We're going to talk today about an initial look at the general fund revenues for this year's, updating this year's estimates based on five months of actual activity, and then an initial forecast for next year. And then we're also, for the first time, going to give you a very early look at what the available resources might be for balancing next year's general fund budget, and I'll reiterate several times probably that this is much earlier than we usually do, and things will change. And as we've done in the past, you'll see the five-year forecast for the general fund in its ongoing and its one-time components, which is an important part of our financial policies. And then we want to discuss, and, you know, so a lot of information for you in the first couple of dot points here, and then we want to talk to you about the financial policies and the categorization of general fund revenue between its ongoing and one-time components. We had some conversation about that, what's ongoing, what's one-time, in last year's budget process, as well as retreat. So, we do want to end with your discussing the financial policies and if there's any desire to make changes to those. So, as I mentioned a little while ago, this is very early. There are more changes that will happen to these numbers. We just got the reporting from the state on six months' worth of sales tax. Those are looking a little better than the November did, so that's good information. But we'll definitely have more information as we move forward. We do typically get state shared revenue estimates from other sources. Those come much later in the process, so we're using our estimates for now. In February, we'll get new assessed valuations from the county that will allow us to redo the primary property tax and the assessed valuation forecast for secondary purposes. We are nearly complete with reviewing the department-based budgets, but we just have a few more pieces of that to do. This thing's kind of weird. And then, as we go forward in the process, if you remember last year's budget process, we had come forward with here's the amount of resources that might be available, and then we were able to spend more than that. And that was because we had some supplementals or capital projects that also had resources associated with them. So we may, as we come forward, have future supplementals that might change the revenue outlook. And same thing on the expenditure side, very early, we haven't finished the base budget. We haven't pushed through the salary and benefit assumptions yet, so we're just making some general assumptions about those. And we're still reviewing the updates to the asset management plans. So those are some of the things that are still ongoing that are kind of more technical and just building the basic budget. What I wanted to do is start off with just some general economic forecast data, and I want to spend a little bit of time on this chart because it appears misleading when you see it. This is information from the Eller School down at the U of A. They're a very good resource for forecasting. They do conservative forecasting. I've worked with their data for about thirty years, and they've been doing this for, since forty-nine or fifty, something like that. Their data is, their forecasts are typically very conservative. And what we're showing you here is, I'll start with the blue and the red lines. The blue line, so overall, these are growth rates over the prior year. These are not activities, but this is a growth rate. So if you look at the blue and the red lines, the blue line represents personal income growth. And so that's being projected to grow in the six percent range each year over the prior year. And the red line is for retail sales, again, growing five to six percent a year over the time period shown here. Personal income is significant because that's a measure of money people have to spend. And much of our revenue is generated from people spending money on sales taxable activities. So it's a very important measure for what we're looking at. Now, the green line, you notice it has a big spike, and then it appears that it's dropping down. Again, the growth rates are slowing, and that green line represents residential building permit forecasts. So it's not saying that there is going to be less residential building permits coming through. What it's saying is it's not going to be growing as greatly as it has been in the last couple of years. And to make that a little bit more clear, if we could get the Elmo, just to kind of show it to you in another way, those blue bars, so that orange line there is that same growth chart I just showed you on the growth rates for residential building permits. Those blue lines basically apply those growth rates to our current building permit activity. So the blue lines are showing you, we're still going to have very high building permit activity. It's just the step from year to year is not predicted to be as big. Any questions about that? It's kind of a, it's kind of confusing to see that spike, and you feel like it's dropping off. It's just the growth.
I was relieved. I looked at that.
Thank you.
Jerry?
I have a question about the red line, the retail sales line. Is that only brick and mortar and the brick and mortar we have now, or will that, is that also kind of taking into account after Wayfair, any income from?
That forecast, and Laney, I think we're done with, is everybody done with this chart?
Sorry, back to that one, yes.
The, that is a, this, these are forecasted growth rates for the metropolitan Phoenix area, so it would be retail activity happening in metropolitan Phoenix. So I have to do some more research to find out if they incorporate internet activity into that or not, but that's not for Goodyear, that's for the whole valley. We typically perform a little bit better than the rest of the valley, so.
But just in general, just because.
But the concept, yeah, and what the important concept is, we're looking at steady growth in what we're seeing here. Nobody is forecasting a recession in the near future, and that's, that's the message we wanted to convey with here. It's not exact numbers or what we think's actually going to happen.
Bill?
Lori, you mentioned that in the staff report, that very comment about no one is anticipating a recession, but everybody is predicting a recession within the next eighteen months. So how do we?
These are, most of these forecasts that we have are consensus forecasts that are built through the key economists through, throughout the valley, you know, SRP, APS, Elliott Pollock, all of them contribute to these kinds of forecasts. So, you know, this is, the, this information was provided in the last two months, and it's the best forecast that we have right now. It's not a, there's a, it's not a recession if you're still having growth. And so we're seeing right now a continued forecast for some level of growth and, and strong growth in personal income and retail.
So without being argumentative, because I really don't.
Bill, can you pull the microphone a little closer?
I really don't mean to be, but we grew during the greatest recession that we ever had as a country. City of Goodyear continued to grow, so technically, we didn't have a recession, but everyone around us did, and we were shedding employees. So I know what, we're, we're trying to paint a pretty positive picture, but I, and I'm not an economist, but I would certainly hope that that isn't the only thing that is giving us confidence to go forward, is that there's been a study or a consensus of folks that say there isn't one, because there's a whole nother side of the planet that is saying, we are in for one, we just don't know when, if it's going to be late nineteen or early twenty, but we're in for one, and how big it'll be, no one knows. So I think just with a little bit of caution, because I think the public hears, oh, there isn't going to be one, they're going to look at that and say, well, wait a minute, I read the Wall Street Journal, and everyone says there's going to be one, so don't be foolish, city.
And council member, I don't disagree with you that that certainly was going on out there, and that's why we wanted to present, you know, that's not the only thing, that is the thing that does get attention in the, in the media right now, but we did want to provide that there are other sources to gather that kind of information, but I wholeheartedly agree with you, we're not trying to, you know, paint a picture that is rosier than the current situation is. And as we move on, you can see how we, I'll show you how we've forecasted our revenue relative to the personal income data that's shown there.
And I did note, just to, to alleviate the argumentativeness of this, I did note that despite these ideas, we still have been very conservative going forward. So I think when we make a public comment as such, I think we have to recognize that whoever is listening, if they are, that we're aware that there's other things that are at play. So, thank you.
Thank you. Joe?
Yeah, I appreciate the information, but sometimes it's a self-fulfilling prophecy that brings a lot of these on, depending on what the Federal Reserve does, or what the President says, or whether they decide that they're going to jack up interest rates, is what brings on sometimes of these things. So sometimes words will bring on things. But from my perspective, if we hold, usually typically, if you're looking like you're going down, first thing, you're going to see housing start to slow, you're going to see interest rates start to go up, you're going to see the Fed start, which gives us a leading indicator of what's kind of going on. So from my perspective, if you're playing flat going across, that's probably a pretty conservative way of looking at it. And you always get a heads up, because again, the, the leading indicator is going to be your activity and your planning and zoning and that, that type of thing. So I don't, I don't have any problem with the estimates that you have there. I don't know, again, on the recession, from my perspective, the stock market can't figure out what it's doing to begin with, and it looks like the Feds may be backing off on whether they're going to increase the interest rates. So in that case, as long as the federal government keeps doing nothing like it's doing, I think we're going to be okay, to be honest with you, long term. So it's when they tend to get in there is when they have a tendency to muddle things up a bit. So I'm, I'm comfortable with the, with the growth rate right now, but again, you never know, and all you can do is kind of give an estimate with the information that you have.
Any other? Wally?
Well, we always know there's uncertainty. It's just there. And then you've got the really worriers, and then you've really got the warrior warriors. And we know it could be coming, we think it might be coming, we don't know when it's going to come, we just have to plan and be smart and have some contingency plans. It's like anything else, you try to be prevented, you do the best you can do with the knowledge you have, but you can't invent fear. Yeah, I guess you could, but we just have to be smart, and we've been smart so far, and I don't have any thought that we would not be conservative smart in the days to come, based on this forecast or any other forecast you see.
I think we look at our past, we have been conservative, but we've been smart and forged ahead, where we need to forge ahead. And I think that is always a threat, the word recession, everybody goes, oh, we can't do anything, got to put money here, we got to do that. That kind of mentality doesn't move the city forward and doesn't even it out in all the opportunities, because opportunities don't knock at your door every day, and they run in cycles too. And they run in cycles with availability of land and other, other things that a city offers. So not that we shouldn't keep the word in our vocabulary, but I would hate to build the entire budget on a recession at this time.
Okay. If you have one, I'll keep moving on.
Okay, go ahead.
So in addition to information such as I've just shown you, we also obviously monitor our own revenues. We do provide you a monthly financial report with information on, on sales tax activity, and then every quarter, we provide you a little bit more background and information. So I thought I'd give you an idea, if we just look at ninety-five percent of our ongoing revenue and the kind of the slides, I'll go through the next two slides, our non-construction sales tax, and again, this was after five months, is, is performing well, it's ahead of budget through, through the five months. So we're assuming that it's going to, it's going to grow at a five point five percent over the prior year, and that will be one point six million over the budget at year end. Construction sales tax is also performing well. At November, if you looked at the monthly financial report, we noted that November was on budget. The initial information we just got on December is we're back up above budget, and we've already collected the four point five million that has been dedicated to ongoing revenues and another one point one million towards the, the one time, now that we've satisfied that first four point five. State shared revenues, we are showing them slightly down from what we budgeted. That's primarily due to state shared sales tax. It finished below our estimates last year, and it is lagging below budget this year. So with, that's why we've reduced state shared revenues slightly. The primary property tax, it, you always slightly under-collect it, there's a few unpaid bills, eventually those, you get them back through, but, but it, so we're, we keep it at, right near the levy. Development-related, we've increased that revenue a million from budget to bring it to eight million. That's still very conservative compared to the last two years, that we're at ten point four and nine point one million. So we would anticipate if we don't change that number before the end of this year, we will collect more than that, and we'll have a higher fund balance at the end of this year than we would expect. So with that information about the resources, this is what this year looks like compared to budget. So we budgeted and anticipated beginning balance of forty-seven point five million dollars, and that was made up of savings from last year and carryovers a couple, a month ago. Last month, you saw a presentation on our annual financial report, and we advised you that we finished the year seventeen point four million higher than we had planned on. So we have an additional seventeen point four million dollars that's available this year. Our tradition is that that becomes a one-time resource for next year's budget. The revenues that I just talked to you about, we're increasing our revenue estimates by five point seven million dollars. Again, I mentioned we haven't finished the base budget, we're just assuming that we'll finish one point five percent under budget. We traditionally finish lower than that under budget. So again, that's a conservative estimate of, of where we'll be, so that frees up one point three million. In terms of the one-time expenses, we have assumed that all the one-time will be spent, with the exception that in order to show you what kind of resources would be available for next year, we went ahead and removed the nine million that remains in that CIP contingency we created for those projects that might need to come forward this year. So that nine million, we're kind of showing it available as to getting to next year's resources. Obviously, if some, one of those projects comes forward this year, we would use those resources for that. And then in addition, though, you've also approved the use of one million of that beginning fund balance for additional expenses in the development-related areas, so we've added that expense here, so that's a net of an eight million dollar change. And then, of course, the contingency, we don't spend from year to year, and that just falls to fund balance, and it becomes the source for funding next year's contingency. And that's the fifteen percent of ongoing operating revenues. So right now, we're projecting we'll finish this year with forty-seven million dollars that's available to move to next year.
Yes, Joe?
Just to make sure I'm, I'm reading it right. The first line up there to the right under comments is seven point six, most of that additional revenue is one-time revenue, because it looks like one point three as you go down to the base budget would be additional ongoing revenue that's coming in, is, is that a fair assessment?
Yeah, let me, I, I should have given you the background on that. That seven point six million dollars in higher revenue, two point four million of that was higher development-related revenue, so that's same where we're assuming eight million this year, we finished at ten.
Right.
So that's kind of where two point three of that, of that seventeen point four million came from. Another two point three million of it came from construction sales tax being higher than we estimated, so that's definitely an ongoing one. One point three million of it did come from non-construction sales tax, so we had higher ongoing revenues than, than we anticipated.
So from the, what was budgeted versus what we think, and again, I understand it's early in, is that we're going to have possibly, based on these numbers, one point three more above and beyond ongoing, that could be used for ongoing before you do the base, which is going to be another five percent increase that's going to be available. Is that a fair assumption?
Yeah, it's the, the, yeah, let me, we'll, we'll show you the forecast for next, we'll show you the next slides, we'll show you how much is available for next year, and maybe I can answer that question better.
Now, I just want to make sure I understand that slide right there.
Yeah, no, thank you for that question, too. I want to see the difference between the two as well, but the forty-seven million is what we're thinking we're going to have extra for next year, right? Estimating, rough estimating right now.
Yeah, so it, basically, we're saying we're going to have two point three million, two, twenty-three point one million more dollars coming in in resources, the first seventeen point four coming from last year, and another five point seven million in revenue this year. And then we're going to have expenditure savings of almost twenty-four million, most of that coming from, we don't spend the CIP from year to year, and we don't, and we aren't planning on spending that CIP reserve.
Okay. And that contingency reserve account?
That's.
I mean, we would normally keep that.
Yeah.
And we wouldn't necessarily spend that.
As we get further in, you'll see what happens with it. It becomes beginning balance for one-time purposes, and then the first thing we take off of one time is next year's contingency. So it becomes a resource for next year's contingency.
I'll wait for more.
Okay.
All set? Go ahead.
All righty. So just a little bit about what we're assuming for two thousand and twenty revenues. So we're continuing the same five point five percent growth rate for next year over this year's sales tax. We're assuming state shared revenues, about a two point five percent growth rate on those. Urban revenue sharing, which is income tax, we kind of know what that's going to be because it's shared two years late, so we have an indication what that will look like. And it is still not growing because of prior legislative changes that impacted corporate income tax. And we've made a, a small adjustment for population, not as much as we really think our population will adjust, but if you'll remember, with the changes that have been made, we don't get the population information until well after you have to adopt a budget, so we felt it was important to make a small assumption that we believe is conservative there. And then primary property tax is based on our most recent forecast, and we will update that when we get new assessed valuation in the middle of February. And then development-related, we've put in it seven point two million dollars, so this year, we budgeted seven, we just upped it slightly for next year. And we'll talk a little bit more about that when we get into the financial policies discussion and, and the, the, the nature of that number being, we feel is a solid number to be included in the ongoing revenue. So this just gives you a summary, since most of what we're dealing with when we're talking about forecasting, what we're talking about today are revenues, and it just shows you, as you'll see, our last year's actuals exceeded this year's budget in revenues and the general fund, and that is kind of what we were showing you, that's why those funds came, came to be. So we're showing next, we're upping this year's estimate for ongoing revenue and what we're doing for next year. So this shows you, Joe, or councilman, I think this shows you your question about the increase in ongoing revenues, going from ninety-nine point five that we're estimating this year to one hundred and two point six next year.
Go ahead.
About three point one million? So this then shows you our initial estimates for next, for next year's. So, this then shows you our initial estimates for next, for next year's budget in, in the one-time and the ongoing columns. So, that 47 million I mentioned, that we're expect to finish this year with, 2.1 of that gets allocated to ongoing. That's our current practice with regard to the operating costs set aside. It's basically what we set aside in this year's budget. So, we bring that to come into the ongoing part. And all the rest of the, of the ending fund balance from this year becomes a one-time resource. So, that puts that 47 million into those two categories. And then, the next line reflects the revenue and the transfers in. So, the increase in the ongoing is associated with the transfers in from the enterprise funds for their share of administrative costs and their property tax. And then, the 5.5 million is what's estimated for construction sales tax above the 4.5 million that the current financial policy calls for as ongoing. And then, we have not updated the operating costs set aside. We didn't adopt a full CIP this year. So, we did not update that plan. So, this 3.3 million is based on the plan that was done two years ago. That will be updated by the time we finish the budget process and we have the, the CIP prepared. So, that's typically, we show not spending those in ongoing purpose and spending them on a one-time purpose instead. And that's why it's a reduction in ongoing and an add to one-time. We've assumed this year's base budget plus 3.5%. It's kind of a reasonable experience in the past as a way to capture inflation and any salary adjustments that might eventually be made. We're showing nothing in one-time. We, we don't really have one-time. That does come through the budget process through the form of one-time supplementals or the CIP. Debt is known. It's issued debt. The contingency that's there, so that's the, the 14.6 million from this year becomes 15.4 million next year because it's 15% of ongoing revenues. And that excludes the transfers. It's just the revenues that we calculate that on. And then, the transfers out are also based on this year's budget, and those are the resources that are used to support the ballpark and the HERF funds because their revenues don't support their ongoing operating costs. And then, the amounts that are transferred for asset management purposes. So, when you boil that all down, we're looking at, if we had to balance the budget today, and again, I'll remind you with, this is very early, we'd have about 600,000 available for new ongoing purposes and about 29, almost 30 million available for one-time supplementals and capital projects in next year from general funds.
Question? Bill?
Okay, so this is where, where I couldn't connect the dots. We set aside 3.3 for operational costs for future whatevers. Is that? So, the 600,000 that you're referencing in this example is 600 plus the 3.3?
Correct.
So, it's really 3.9?
Yes.
And then, we do that every year. That's just been the plan that we, haven't we had a target that we've been shooting at?
We've been, the plan, we had a plan that was based on, it includes the fire stations we anticipated would be opening. It includes the additional phase of the police operations facility opening. It includes the end of, the forecasted end of when we will stop receiving resources from EMR for the fire operations, and when we will have exhausted the operating revenues that are coming in from the SADA agreement, where we receive operating expenses also. We took those and we figured out on an average basis how much we would need to set aside per year to be able to meet those needs when they came upon us. And the way we do this is if we fund any of those supplementals next year, that 3.3 million would be used to fund those supplementals. So, we would have less going to one-time if some of those supplementals are funded this year.
That's what I thought, and I think it's important for the public to understand that it's 3.3 that is kind of identified, set aside, specific use only kinds of projects. And that, that's what I thought when I was reading it, and then, through the course of the conversation, I started to weave. So, I appreciate the explanation.
It's, it's the way we protect the ongoing resources from spending them on something else today because we know that ongoing need is coming in the future.
That's great. Thank you.
Joe?
Very similar to what we did to the ballpark. So, that, when it came time, that we had to pay all that additional principal and interest from that ballpark. When it changed, we had the money there that we didn't have to drain from others. I, I guess maybe a redundant question, but the 3.3% on the base, you feel comfortable, that's probably what you're gonna need above what you had before to cover your increase in fuel and electricity and salaries and et cetera.
Yeah, that, I, I, I believe it is reasonable. It is definitely a tentative number, and there are a few little things hanging out there that we're looking at. But I believe it is realistic, and it's probably higher than we've had in the last couple of years or, or right near where we were.
So, let's make some assumptions that this is what it is, okay? Even though this is gonna change, then anybody looking for new positions that needs ongoing or any type of program that's looking for an ongoing funding source has got 600,000.
That's correct, councilmember.
Okay, thank you.
If I could add the caveat that we are so early in the process.
I understand that. That's what I said.
That that number's likely to only grow.
Okay, and that's why I said, assuming that these numbers are what they are.
But we have to start somewhere. This is a very conservative place to start.
I understand.
The reason for preventing this information is to give you a sense of where we might be. So, you know, we aren't gonna have 10 million to add new ongoing costs. But, so it is to just give you an, an idea of what kind of environment we'll be working forward in. But I assure you, these numbers will change.
And over costs, you know, on projects, I, I just think what's going on with MAG and ADOT. What, what percentage do we, or what, how do you, how do, what number are you going to call on that?
I'm sorry, mayor. Can you repeat your question? On, on the, we don't have anything in for capital projects or one-time needs here. That's what that 29.7 would go towards because those will come through the budget process. And so, you know, we are continuing to work on the capital projects and are working towards being able to come back to you and talk about those capital projects. But, but that's, if any capital projects that we would want to fund next year that would be general funded would come out of that 29.7 million.
Can I, can I just follow up a second?
Let me get Brandon first. Brandon?
It kind of follows on with that.
All right.
At what point would the, are we gonna see that? We're gonna see that before the CIP? Well, I mean, how far out you think we'll be starting to see that report?
Right now, we're, I have a placeholder for the February 25 council meeting, I believe, to do a work session to start talking about CIP projects.
Yeah, I'm excited to start. So, that's where it's gonna go. So, thank you.
Joe?
No, my follow-up, I think, is simple. Some of what Brandon was, was talking about was, I know at some point, we had a lot of dollars for the CIP, which I suspect we're way under, okay? So, and is that gonna be the 25th when we'll look to see what we thought it was gonna be? Now, what reality says it's going to be, and this is how much money we need to make up those differences, assuming we're gonna do those CIP projects, that will eat up into that 27.9. Is that a fair assumption?
Correct. And as, as you'll recall, we just did a one-year CIP with this current budget with the promise that we would be able to present to you a fully funded and deliverable five-year CIP. So, staff's been working diligently to, to put that program together. But certainly, we're in an environment right now, the economy's strong, but that also means that we're seeing a lot of cost pressures on all of the projects.
Bill?
So, to follow up on your revenue statement, and I think it's gonna help through the rest of this presentation, the numbers that we have discussed about projects and their impact, the new projects that are coming to the city and their ongoing revenue impacts, it appeared that those are not reflected in any of these charts or any of these projections going forward, particularly the ones where the expenses are exceeding the revenues. Those are not inclusive of any of the things that we just were made aware of last week, for example. Is that correct?
Are you referring to ongoing revenues or are you, are you referring to CIP projects?
Franchise agreement, franchise fees, et cetera, which are ongoing monies?
Correct. So, I think that Laurie can probably talk to it, but I'll, I'll give a, an overview. So, my understanding is that when we're looking at projections, we look at a line item, say, non-construction sales tax, and we use a multiplier that shows what we believe is a conservative trend number. We do not take an individual project and say, we believe this project will increase this line item by X dollars. So, we believe it, within the trend line, it captures our new growth within the City of Goodyear. I'd like to expand.
So, yeah, councilman, I, I thought you were, are you talking about projects that might be coming to the city in terms of economic development?
Yeah, and monies that we made some decisions on last week that.
Right. So, I, I apologize. I thought you were talking about the capital projects. So, we don't do anything in our revenue estimates to account for a particular entity that might be coming. We just assume growth consistent with historical growth, consistent with forecasts. So, we would not be counting on, on additional revenues associated with any particular item that might be moving forward.
So, if we knew that for, and this is literally an example, an online retailer that was gonna be collecting sales tax and the revenue in the realm of 50 million a year, we would not anticipate that in our budget projection? Or is that too big of a number?
If we, yeah, I mean, that would be something, if we knew that were the case, and we were very certain, we would, something that, of that magnitude, we would take into consideration. It, I don't think there's anything out there right now that we have such great certainty as to what the sales tax impact might be, that we're prepared to adjust our revenue estimates. But that doesn't mean we can't do that.
No, I'm, so I'm done dancing the executive session line. So, I'm done with that. I guess that's a slight departure from what we've done in the past. And, and probably before your arrival, we were always anticipating the, the financial impact of what the mall would bring in retail sales tax. And after a while, we finally said, okay, stop, which was a good thing. But we've got a few more certain things coming down the pipe, and I was just trying to make the correlation there, but I'll stop.
Well, and if I could just add, I do think that adds and highlights the conservative nature of our revenue forecast. We're clearly seeing a lot of activity when you drive around the streets of Goodyear, and that will have a positive impact on our budget. We just want to make sure, whether it's a future recession, you know, that we are being conservative with the information. And that's why you see the large numbers like our 17 million that we had in carry forward from a previous years because we had underestimated what those revenues would be. We want to be good on our revenue projection. You don't want to cut yourself so short that you're unable to do the projects, as the mayor had alluded to. But it is, you know, they say budgeting is a, is a science, that you're trying to find that right, that right spot where you're projecting your revenues. So, appreciate the conversation.
And we would, we would.
Brandon?
I was just gonna say the same thing. I'd rather have the opportunity to add as opposed to subtract from, from the budget. So, being conservative, I think, is, is the way to go.
Yeah, we would hopefully never adopt a budget that we didn't anticipate we would spend less and bring in more revenue. The degree of conservatism and how wide that gap is, is a, a topic for a conversation. But you would never put yourself in a situation where you were being so not conservative that you got yourself in a situation where you're constantly having to say, uh-oh, we gotta stop spending. Uh-oh, we gotta put a hiring freeze on or, or whatever.
Joe?
No, I think Brandon made a good point. If, if for some reason we're short, you have an extra few million dollars, and that means you don't have to borrow to build a project, you actually use cash to build a project. So, I'd rather be in that position, too.
Any other questions? Go ahead, go ahead.
Just gonna go through the five-year forecast quickly with you. Just, again, it's to kind of give you an idea of what the future looks like to help you make decisions on this budget process. So, I mentioned earlier that blue line for the personal income that forecast from the, from the U of A School of Economics. The yellow line represents the growth rate we're assuming on non-construction sales tax. So, we're always a little less conservative in the year we're preparing a budget for. But you'll still see we're 1% below the growth rate projected for the valley. And we have higher growth rates than that in terms of population and those types of things. But then, you'll see when we move into the forecast, the five-year forecast window, we're making that gap even larger. So, that's where we're adding this extra level of conservatism for forecasting the future. So, we drop down almost a 2% or more below the forecasted growth rates there. And then, our state shared revenue estimates are even lower than that. So, just to give you an idea of the conservative nature of the forecast, again, it shows you the difference of when you're preparing a budget, you're a little less conservative. But when you're forecasting the future, we're more conservative. So, with that information, this is kind of, just shows you the bottom lines, and I'll show you another slide on this. If, if those, with those revenue estimates, we do show that we would cross that point of expenditures exceeding revenues in '22, and they would then continue to, to widen. And with, what I wanted to show you is this graph shows you, that blue line is what that forecast I just showed you forecasts as available resources or non-available resources. The orange or the red line shows you, if we adjusted those revenue estimates by 1%, we would basically, that, I'm trying to show you that when you build conservatism on conservatism on conservatism, it gets even bigger. So, we start with a gap of about a million dollars between the two estimates, and we grow to being 5 million apart just by making a 1% difference in those estimates. If we used half a percent higher growth rates, it would still stay positive. The orange line would stay positive for the whole five-year forecast. So, just trying to again emphasize that when you're conservative and you continue to be conservative, you, you make it a bigger gap.
Joe?
You know, that's why that policy of identifying future O&amp;Ms, like the, like the fire stations that are coming online after, you know, the contributions from the developer runs out is so critical because if we didn't follow that policy, and we went ahead and spent that money in advance and tried to find that five or six or seven million dollars, whatever it was, we'd be in trouble. So, again, I, you know, I applaud staff looking at it that way because to me, that is a very sound policy that keeps us from getting in trouble whether it's recession or not a recession because we've already anticipated, just like with the ballpark, by setting that money aside, you know, we got the worst-case scenario. Now, we have the money to pay the debt service where if we didn't do that, we'd be looking for operating money to do that. So, again, you know, I applaud the policies that have been recommended, and that's what keeps us even making it through tough times because we have plan for that. So.
And the, the forecast that I showed you does include what those forecasted operating costs are. So, we have incorporated that in preparing these forecasts as well. On the one-time front, we've assumed that there'll be 10 million a year in savings from year to year. You've obviously seen that it was higher than that. Just after last year, there was 17 million. And there was already some assumptions about saving and building that budget. So, the 10 million a year is very conservative as a, an input into the one-time resources. And then, we're just showing loading in that prior year contingency because then the prior year contingency comes out. And we just set the construction sales tax at 5 million, which is slightly lower than the 5.5 million we have in this year. And that's where you can see the operating cost set aside has gone away because we built it up and then we spent it. And that's why there's none in those out years. And again, that will change the next time we talk to you. Wanted to move on to talking about the financial policies. And essentially, there's, you know, we have some key financial policies that involve having a diverse revenue system. We maximize our primary property tax. Council has set a policy of 4.5 million in construction sales tax being treated as ongoing. And that was one of the items that was discussed somewhat at the retreat that we hope to get some more information on, that we should be funding development-related activity consistent with the revenue coming from that, and we'll talk a little bit more about that. And the concept of matching ongoing expenses with ongoing revenues as well as our enterprise funds being self-sufficient. So, in the topic of categorizing our revenue as ongoing and versus one-time, you know, the, the policy or the, kind of the, the recommended practices as in that, is that we as an organization review our revenue and determine what we feel is one-time and what's ongoing because there is not a universal standard out there for this. It is specific to what your jurisdiction experiences. So, we went and looked at about 90% of our general fund revenue. We didn't want to deal with all the little tiny things. 57% comes from sales tax, both construction, including the construction sales tax and the franchise. Another 20% comes from our state shared revenues, and of that, the, the bulk of it's from the income tax and the sales tax. There's a little bit of vehicle license tax there as well. Primary property tax makes up. Primary property tax makes up 10% almost of our revenue, and development-related is about 7%. So that's, those are the revenue streams we reviewed to look for one-time characteristics. And then you see there, the last dot point is the Arizona Sports and Tourism Authority. We are, we, I didn't call that out in our forecast. We've included that revenue for the first time in the forecast. We would expect to start receiving that revenue in '21. And we believe the revenue estimates we have were provided by the Sports and Tourism Authority, and believe those are conservative revenue estimates as well. So I want to talk about how we would, well, first, you'd ask for more information on the construction sales tax. So this little bit of a confusing chart, but basically, the orange bars show you construction sales tax, and the little blue dots show how much the difference, what we would have been collecting in construction sales tax under that old reporting method, or vice versa. That's what we collect now. And then the blue bars are the other non-construction, and the orange dots are the amount of construction that was previously reported up there. So we just wanted to show you, you know, we had that reporting change. We've known all along there is some level of construction sales tax we were relying on on an ongoing basis. In our analysis of this, I think when we made the recommendation last year, we recommended 5 million be allocated of construction sales taxes ongoing. And that was based on an analysis that showed that the five-year low average was about 5.1. Our new analysis suggests that could go as high as 5.3 easily, if not higher than that. But just wanted to kind of give you a visual picture of kind of what that looked like. So as we went through those revenues, you know, our recommendation is we treat property tax as a fully ongoing revenue. It's a stable revenue, we know we're going to get it. We're also recommending that we treat sales tax as an ongoing revenue, with the exception that we continue to have a policy that determines what portion of construction sales tax would be treated as ongoing. And then if you've been following the monthly financial report, you'll notice that there's been some unusual use tax activity. One of those things when we do have new entities coming, use tax gets paid if you buy things out of state and you don't pay a sales tax. So we think there's some unusual one-time activity going on with some new entities coming in and setting up their business. So we will continue to monitor that. And as we prepare revenue estimates, we would not include that unusual activity in forecasting future ongoing use tax revenues. So if you look at the revenue report we provided, you'll even see that we've shown current year sum of the use tax as one-time instead of up as ongoing. We're recommending state shared remain as a fully ongoing revenue source. Development-related was an area where we have a financial policy that we're supposed to make sure we're spending those resources, we're funding those resources consistent with their revenue. And it was an area where because of the recent growth, we were concerned that perhaps the revenue was growing higher than the ongoing costs, and we were treating that as an ongoing revenue. And so we reviewed the current year budget for the areas, development services and for engineering. And then we, not only are we recovering their direct costs, but we're recovering overhead like my time, the finance director's time, the city manager's time, HR's time, in what's called a fully loaded cost recovery. And using that, we estimate that their costs that we're recovering this year is about 7.4 million. And that's based on this year's budget. If you remember, what we're budgeting for next year is 7.2 million. So we are right now below what we feel would be a safe number to restimate for ongoing portion of the development-related revenue. So we're looking at potentially finding a way to start allocating, if we've been conservative, we haven't been estimating more than four one-time activity there. And we're recommending we continue just to budget for the, what we think is a reasonable ongoing portion of that.
Bill?
And if I could just get the thing in about as, so we're just saying to treat that as ongoing, primarily because it's paying us back for debt service that we treat as ongoing as well.
Bill?
I think I followed most of that.
Okay.
For the development-related, that's that, for me, the hot-button item. We're at 4.5, that 4.5 is in our financial policy. Your recommendation is to leave it at 4.5 for this year, with the understanding that we could be as high as 7.4 or whatever, some, yeah.
Okay, we're confusing, that's two different things that we've put together here. So the construction sales tax revenue, so the revenue we get on construction sales tax is where we have the 4.5 million policy. This is related to the revenue from the fees that development services and engineering assess.
Jet lag, thank you.
Any other question? Joe?
When we had the recession back in '07 and '08, typically, the first place that gets hit is that area right there, other than construction sales tax. I feel comfortable with the 4.5 only because of the amount of vacant land, and if anything starts to decrease, I think we got more than enough time to make up that difference. You know, my only concern is you feel comfortable in this area of fees with the 7.4 being enough of a buffer if all of a sudden permits and variety of other things start slowing down. I guess that's a question to staff, because I don't do this on a daily basis, so that's why I'm asking you. But that's the only kind of jitterys I get in this fee structure being ongoing, because when it slows, that's going to get hit.
Councilmember, council...
Just Brazil.
If you'll recall, we've funded a lot of their activity on, their activity on a one-time basis.
I know.
And so we are trying to balance keeping the ongoing within this, and then funding the rest as one-time. So you'll continue to see us being conservative in how we recommend their operating costs to be funded. But I will note that we are forecasting ongoing building activity at the levels we're at now. And so it's, it may be time for us to think about a little bit more ongoing in their budget, and we'll talk about that as we move forward.
You know, and I appreciate, you know, the past approach, because I know when the city engineer came before us and explained about the one-time bringing on, because that's something I can adjust kind of on the fly if for some things start to tweak, as opposed to, I hate for us to be hiring a bunch of people within that area. Things go down and out, you gotta do the sad thing of letting people go. And that, that I hate seeing when it comes to people that get hurt and family. So in that area, I really appreciate the post, the approach you've had in the past of using one-time and contractual so that you have some latitude there in case it does start to go down. So maybe it is time for a little bit, but I'm always a little cautious in that area when, because that tends to be the first that gets hit when things start to slow down, so, thank you.
Any other questions?
So in general, we are, our intent is to come back to you in February to have you adopt the financial policies so that the financial policies are guiding the budget recommendations. And so I think I'm hearing no recommended changes in the financial policies. We will...
Get any comments on that, so I'm just gonna...
Can I state that actually for the record? I will not be asking for any changes to the 4.5.
Put it in writing, Bill.
Put it in writing, we're gonna say hallelujah.
We, we, we will bring you one small revision. We're gonna propose one small revision. There's a piece inside the financial policies that talk about complying with law, and it calls out some specific laws. We would like to make that one of the overall goals and just say we'll comply with laws, because there's no way we can list all the laws we need to comply with inside the guts of the financial policy. So we'll probably bring that as a slight change, and hopefully you'll be receptive to that at that point in time.
Well, you've given us a warning. We'll remind everybody of that warning, okay? Thank you so much, Mark.
Thank you.
This is very nice, of course, you have to admit it, it looks pretty good.
Looks good.
Lot of smiles on our face. All right, well, let's go on to the next one. And you're going to be receiving an update in the economic development strategy. And we have our Economic Development Director, Lori Gury. Great?
Thank you, Mayor Lord, Vice Mayor Campbell, and members of the council. This is my first official presentation to the council, and I'm hoping that the technology, I understand how to work the technology. In October of 2018, after having a whole two weeks under my belt, I sat through the economic develop, or excuse me, I sat through the council retreat. And at the end of that retreat, council provided, during that retreat, I should say, council provided feedback and thoughts pertaining to development in Goodyear. At the end of that retreat, council asked staff to come back and give an update on the economic development strategy, and taking into account all the feedback provided at the retreat, hence the reason I am here this evening. Before I get started, I would certainly like to introduce the economic development staff. They are in the audience and have, now have a wonderful handle on our budget and budgeting process. If the economic development staff would please stand.
And tell them to stay standing for a moment, yes.
Stay standing. And as I mentioned your name, if you would raise your hand, and council is gonna keep you accountable to that. Harry Paxton, just give away, Robert Edo, and Dara Mann. Those are our three project managers within the economic development department. Angela Woods is our marketing coordinator, and she handles our branding and marketing and messaging. And of course, Kendra Hoffman, who started the same time I did. And so she has now, has a total of three months under her belt. Thank you so much.
Let's give a round of applause.
When I started with the city of Goodyear, I was told many times over and over that Goodyear hires the very best people in order to provide our clients and our customers with the very best experience. And I can tell you from three months on the job that our economic development staff really epitomizes that. In October 2018, the interim economic development director, Harold Stewart, provided council with an update on what has happened in economic development over the past 27 months. In order to set the stage for the economic development strategy tonight, I'd like to quickly go through what he provided you. Harold mentioned that within the past 27 months, economic development staff has worked to facilitate over 3,000 net new jobs, as well as $662 million of investment. Again, not all of those have come to fruition yet. Some of them are still in the process, in the review process. And as you all know, as of last week, one of them has broken ground. But those jobs and investments are in those numbers. Secondly, Harold mentioned that over the past 20 months, we've had 80 new retail restaurants and entertainment venues come into, come into the city of Goodyear, either announced, planned, or under construction. Since the end of, excuse me, since the end of September, we've had three new businesses open in this category. Del Taco, Filberto's, and Service King. There are many more that are still in the planning stages, and also some that are under construction that we're going to continue to see. Under construction activities, he mentioned that in the industrial and technology sector, there's expected to be 6 million square feet under construction, which is happening today. We also have some new medical and office projects that were, that are going to be delivered. And some of them are ground up, and that is Adelante is one of them, as well as an adaptive reuse project, which was formerly known as Palm Valley Cinema, and will now be a Class A high-tech medical office space. In addition, we have multiple retail projects planned or under construction. And we have four hotels that are in the queue, two of which are in the review process. The Innovation Hub at Goodyear is our small business development effort that Harold mentioned. They provide a variety of services and programming to our small businesses, as well as entrepreneurs within the community. Startup school is one of them, one-on-one mentoring. Business Builders, which is a monthly meetup of entrepreneurs, as well as small businesses. Special classes and workshops, which are honed depending on the feedback we receive from those that are in the program, as well as partnering with numerous organizations that are already in the community, SCORE being one of them. SCORE does provide one-on-one mentoring within our Innovation Hub. As a matter of fact, just recently, one of the companies, or entrepreneurs, I should say, that was in, working with our Innovation Hub, did a post on social media. We pushed this out, but I'd like to share with you what he said. This gentleman's name is Ruben Trujillo. He has started a company called Cafe Emporos. And here's what he said. "I started Cafe Emporos a year prior to joining the Innovation Hub. It wasn't until after attending the business builder meetings and the one-on-one mentoring that I started to see growth in my business. Thanks to the Innovation Hub, I was directed to a program where I received and won a business grant." He is just one of several of the entrepreneurs that our small business development efforts have assisted in starting, as well as building their businesses. We also talked about marketing, Harold talked about marketing. He called it a website enhancement, it was really a new build. The photography that has taken place, we've been able to pitch and received four editorials in that 27-month. Innovation Hub articles have come out, marketing brochures have been updated. We've launched a new page on our webpage called BizBuzz. This is where you can go to find all the new announcements that are taking place in the city of Goodyear. This is what it would look like if you were to go to that page. We have two social media accounts specifically for economic development. One is LinkedIn, and the other one is Twitter, and of course, our paid advertising efforts. This sets the stage for the economic development strategy. And as we move forward into the economic development strategy and those discussions, I'd like to share with you a quote from Michael Porter. Michael Porter, his alma mater is Princeton University and Harvard Business School. He has authored numerous books, as well as numerous articles specifically on competitive strategies and taking advantage of your competitive advantage. And Mr. Porter said, "Strategy is about making choices, trade-offs. It's about deliberately choosing to be different." With that said, that is how the economic development strategy has been built. Also, just to remind you of some of the things you all have asked for during your council retreat. Part of it was saying, "We need a well-rounded development within our community. We need to bring in more amenities. We need to take our positives and develop our brand. Use social media, we need to be more active in that area. The same strategies will not work." Also, we'd like to take a look at use of incentives to spur the type of developments that we desire in our community. We need to support our small businesses, and we need to get more aggressive about what we want here in Goodyear. Also, to take a look at other sources of funding in order to develop a sinking fund. Let's begin. In economic development, we have what we call foundations. We have to build the foundations in a community in order to support the pillars of opportunities or our target industry sectors. Economic development foundations are things like infrastructure needs, water, roads, sewer, gas, fiber connectivity, which is becoming more and more important. We need to ensure that we have available sites and buildings, as well as shovel-ready sites and speculative buildings. But not just any speculative buildings, spec buildings that can support the type of pillars of opportunities or target industries that we want to bring. There is a saying in economic development that says, "Product attracts projects." And I would share with you that the right type of product attracts the right type of projects that we are targeting. The other thing in terms of building our foundations, we have to have strong partnerships. And some of those you see on there, GPEC, ACA, site selectors, brokers, and developers. Those are all of our partners. I've left off some, I'm sure we could list a lot more. So let's take a look at our pillars of opportunities. First pillars of opportunity is aerospace and aviation. We know that we have a lot of aerospace and aviation companies already in the city of Goodyear, and that we have the foundations to support that. Medical and healthcare, medical and healthcare is another pillar of opportunity. We do have that industry sector already. We do have that industry sector already in the city of Goodyear. And I would suggest that we need to take a strong look at-- medical and healthcare is very broad-based, and I'll get into this a little bit further, but take a look at exactly what type of healthcare and medical companies that we want to attract. Advanced manufacturing and logistics. Goodyear has been very good at preparing the opportunities to attract these sort of businesses. We have a plethora of them, and they are growing. Take a look at Ball Corporation and Chewy and Sub-Zero. We've got Class A advanced manufacturing facilities, as well as the new one that just broke ground last week. Technology. This is a pillar of opportunity we've had for some time, and the staff has worked very hard on taking a look at the type of companies to attract this-- in this particular industry sector or pillar of opportunity, and we're seeing some traction. Higher education. Goodyear has had a lot of higher education thought processes and has developed several foundations that support this, and we've been very successful. Franklin Pierce University, for example, and Columbia College are two that we have gone after, and we've been successful at attracting to Goodyear. Retail and entertainment. These first five pillars of opportunity all support retail and entertainment. When we have good quality jobs and high-end jobs, it then allows us to go out and seek retail and entertainment. And of course, we do not want to forget our small business development programs, which is another pillar of opportunity. It's only when we have these foundations that can support the pillars of opportunity that we then have the city of Goodyear, the type of community that we want to build. You've seen this vision before, but it is worth repeating. Goodyear is rich with talent and has a vibrant and diverse economy, flourishing with world-class companies and supported by a high quality of life. This is a vision statement that was developed with assistance from a variety of our citizens when the Focus on Success Plan was created. And it dovetails right into your vision that you stated with your fiscal year 2021 strategy. The vision hasn't changed. There's four different strategies I'd like to outline with you today. First and foremost is to ensure Goodyear is prepared to attract targeted growth opportunities. This is the foundations that I talked about as we build-- so that we can build the pillars of opportunity on the foundation. The strategy includes supporting infrastructure. We would support infrastructure requests, whether that be internal or by companies. Secondly, ensure a prepared workforce, and that is working with our key partners, our educational institutions, as well as other partners within the community to connect our businesses with them, to ensure that we have a prepared workforce. Strengthen the availability of speculative space, not just any speculative space, but the appropriate speculative space that will attract the type of companies that we desire. The second strategy is foster job creation within our pillars of opportunity. And I've just named a few of them within each pillar of opportunity. For example, aerospace and aviation. We want to strongly leverage the Phoenix Goodyear Airport as a job generating engine. We have met with the new manager, Brad Hagan. We-- I believe we've got a really strong partner in Brad, and we need to leverage that relationship, as well as the assets of the airport. Medical and healthcare. Identify the specific uses or businesses that we desire and that work in the city of Goodyear. For example, medical and healthcare. We could be talking anything from medical devices and equipment. We could be talking medical services and diagnostics. We could be talking bio and life science research and development. We could be talking about a variety of different things. We need to identify and really hone that particular pillar of opportunity in order to be very targeted in our efforts. And obviously, we need to cultivate public and private partnerships to bring the investments to the area. In our higher education pillar of opportunity, we need to support the growth of our existing higher educational institutions. We have spoken many times with Franklin Pierce University and Columbia College. And in those conversations, it is quite evident that there's a lot of room and opportunity for them to grow in our community. Advanced manufacturing and logistics. We need to capitalize on our shovel-ready sites and our spec buildings, particularly in the PV303 area. And we also need to establish the Loop 303 as the top advanced manufacturing and logistic corridor in Arizona. Technology. One of the things that you had mentioned in your retreat is we need to brand the area. And the thought process here is that it is much easier for us to brand our employment corridors, being very selective. And this is an area, I believe, that we have an opportunity to brand a technology corridor that's centered on technology-based companies. This is underway right now in terms of the recent announcement of Vantage coming into our community. Retail and entertainment. Retail and entertainment is-- the strategy is about honing our materials so that we can really connect with retailers and tell our story. And connecting and collaborating with retail developers and brokers. There's certainly a lot of available land opportunities for this particular pillar of opportunity, and we need to message that to the developers and the brokers. And we cannot forget our small businesses within our community. And targeting our entrepreneurs and our small businesses is essential, and also providing programs, education, and resources aimed at launching businesses and/or scaling the existing businesses we have. Strategy number three is marketing our assets and developing our message. And that includes developing a unique brand, but a unique brand within the employment corridors, the technology corridor, the PV303 corridor, conducting marketing outreach, developing our message and making sure it gets out there, enhancing our website with industry-specific data. When we redid our website, there are industry-specific pages that talk about our pillars of opportunity, and it's really honing the data for that particular industry sector so that companies not only know the industry sector within the state of Arizona, but the advantages of a Goodyear location for that particular sector. Developing and messaging the Goodyear story. We've started that already, and just to show you what we have done, here's information about taking July through December of 2018 and comparing it to last year at that same time period. We have been very active on Twitter and LinkedIn, and we've been able to share our story with a lot of people. And we have increased our impressions within that social media by over 200%. We continue to garner followers within both of those social media accounts, and we're not done yet. Additionally, we have done a lot of paid advertising. This-- we've done a lot of digital advertising, as well as paid advertising. This just shows information on the paid advertising. That's 2017 versus 2018. We have increased the number of ads we placed and also the distribution. Distribution is a little bit deceiving because that is just saying, if I subscribe to, for example, a Phoenix Business Journal, that's being distributed to one person. However, I may share it with everybody in my family. I also may share it with all the staff, people. So they're counting a distribution of one, but the readership is much, much larger. The last pillar of opportunity for our economic development strategy is to develop and utilize unique economic development tools to attract quality jobs. The one I'd like to share with you a little bit about, because I've had questions from council about that, is the Opportunity Zones. It is a federal program. It is designed to spur community investment, and it provides tax benefits to investors. The city of Goodyear is utilizing this tool. We have two census tracts that are designated as Opportunity Zones, and we are now providing some marketing materials and information on our website, as well as hard copy, to really push out information on this unique economic development tool. This is the geographical locations of both of our Opportunity Zones. And as a matter of fact, Goodyear will be presenting to investors and developers. At the end of February, Westmark is putting on an event, and we are part of that event. And so we'll be able to share information about the opportunities within Goodyear's Opportunity Zones. Another unique tool that you all had way before I came on board is the Retail and Entertainment Development Impact Fee Reduction. It is a very unique and creative economic development tool. It was designed to accelerate the attraction of quality retail and entertainment businesses, increase tax revenues, and funds were set aside to do just that. However, it didn't quite yield the results that we had hoped. And at the retreat, you all asked us to take a look at this particular program. And also, in other council sessions, maybe there's another or better way of getting the results that we desired. This particular program will sunset June 30th of this year. So with that thought process in mind, we have a proposal to develop a unique economic development tool. And it's called the Economic Development Opportunity Fund. And this would provide incentives for targeted companies, those companies within our pillars of opportunities. It could be based on such things as investment, jobs created, and average wages. And also, for our retail and entertainment businesses, it could provide incentives for unique retail and entertainment, those sort of businesses that we want to bring. We would like to utilize the remaining retail incentive funds to develop this opportunity fund. The fund could also include reduction of impact fees for those types of businesses and buildings that we desire to see in our community. This is a very flexible program that it could be used for a variety of different ways. All of the strategies take into account the feedback that you gave us during your council retreat. I'd like to just recap the four strategies. Ensure Goodyear is prepared to attract targeted growth opportunities. That's preparing the foundations. Strategy number two, foster job creation within our pillars of opportunities. Strategy number three, market our assets and develop our strong message and ensure that it gets out to the right people that we want it to get out to. And number four, develop and utilize unique economic development tools to attract quality jobs. And that-- under this particular strategy, the specific proposal is to develop an Economic Development Opportunity Fund to be used-- to be used in encouraging business development within our targeted industry. It is a flexible program, and we could utilize the monies that are left over in our retail impact fee reduction program. Next steps. I went through this very fast. I did that purposefully because I knew we only had a limited amount of time. And I know it's hard to take in everything when I've gone through it very fast. But the next steps would be to receive your feedback on the strategy and the strategies that were presented, and also receive your feedback on the Economic Development Opportunity Fund. If this is something that you desire to move forward with, then it would be an agenda item in April. And it would also be-- that particular agenda item would be requesting transferring money from the retail incentive program into the Economic Development Opportunity Fund. I'm glad you all stayed with me for that marathon. I appreciate that. And again, here to hear your feedback and any changes or desires that you'd like to see in the strategies and/or the proposal.
Thank you, Lori. Council comments? Councilmember Laura Tonan?
I'll just be very quick. I'd like-- I know we talked about the fund. I really support that. I think that's a great way. Gives you a little more flexibility than what we had before, and I think that's a great idea. And I do like the fact we focus also on small businesses and what you're doing with the hub and everything. So keep up the good work.
Counselor Vice Mayor?
I've got a couple of questions, Lori. On the entertainment and restaurants, are you dumping them into your retail when you're talking about retail strategies? Because you didn't talk much about restaurants at all.
Yes, and retail-- a restaurant is a retail business. So I apologize. I could have certainly broken that out. But yes, restaurants are absolutely in that retail category.
Because that's a really critical component that we're all interested in, especially the residents want more restaurants in Goodyear. We want the jobs, of course, and we want the development, and we want the high-tech and everything else. But they really want great places to go and take their families for entertainment and good meals. And how much is remaining in the retail investment fund?
I would have to defer that to finance.
I can actually--
I have to defer that to our city manager.
Thank you. What we would be looking to do is-- and just to clarify, the one slide said that we would do the agenda item in April. My intent would be the agenda item would become to you before April, so it could be effective on April 1st, along with the new impact fees. But the amount that we'd be looking to transfer into this new fund would be the $1.5 million. That would leave a half a million dollars in the retail funds. So it would be there while it sunsets, in case someone qualified. After the sunset, we would do another transfer of any remaining dollars.
Do we have any idea what Westgate does to develop-- what incentives they do to develop their area? Are they giving incentives? I mean, are we in the ballpark like the other cities? Or are we trying something new that no one else is doing to attract these businesses?
We have taken a look at what other communities and other cities are doing. Some of them do have an Economic Development Opportunity Fund. It's called other things. But they absolutely have it, and it is replenished every year on a set amount, so that it remains a very flexible program to incentivize, if you will, the types of businesses that are desired.
Perhaps we need to keep discussing that as we go forward, too.
Yes, absolutely.
Any other comments? Joe?
Yeah, I like the idea of flexibility. And like Wally, I think it's important. We still-- you know, retail and restaurants is a focus because that's what I hear all the time out there. But with that being said, as you-- as we move forward in the presentation-- because I know there's some legal things we can do, you know, parameters as far as how we give out the incentives. So I would ask the attorney, whatever parameters we set up to create those incentives, on how they qualify, that should give us some overview of what we can and we can't use as we do these things. Okay? Thanks.
Laura?
I was recently at the LEED's first night class, and the participants were asked what they liked about Goodyear. And so many of them said hometown feel, but it's a dynamic, growing city. So what-- the efforts that you're doing are translating even into the consciousness of the people that are here, and they're feeling that energy, and they're seeing things happening. And it's just creating this momentum within Goodyear. Your social media presence has been outstanding. I think we were almost trending on Friday with the Anderson. Almost. But it's been very exciting. I appreciate all your efforts, and I think we're definitely on the right trajectory.
Bill?
I'm in complete support of the-- whatever we're calling the new fund. I do like the idea that we've expanded it a little bit. I know it was something that we talked about during impact fee implementation, about having a fund that we can-- we doubled, in some cases, the impact fees and having a fund available to offset that for some speculative building or for some large investments that are being made that we don't quite know who's going to fill it. But the fact that we're getting an empty Class A office space is really important for our city, and I think we want to incentivize that. So I'm really looking forward to that. I do agree with Councilmember Campbell and Pizzillo that, you know, let's continue to keep revisiting it, making sure that we've got it funded appropriately as we move forward. But thank you.
Brandon?
Brandon?
I think the Economic Development Department is doing a great job, so I appreciate all your hard work as you're moving forward with that. I mean, all your hard work shows with all the different businesses that we're getting and that we've been receiving here lately, so thank you for that. But yeah, I'm on board with a self-sustaining fund that is always budgeted, so it doesn't keep coming, but it's always being funded. And then, yeah, we can look at incentives and things like that to make sure we can push the ball, but yeah, I'm looking forward to hearing more, so thank you.
My turn? Well, I want to thank ACTAB. They haven't mentioned all the businesses, the manufacturing, the warehousing, fulfillment centers. It's all bringing people into our city. There will be daytime traffic, and we all know that was the one thing that was, we didn't have. We didn't have daytime traffic. Didn't see people on the streets, okay? And so you're asking somebody to come in and build a building to meet their needs. They're not going to move into a building where they have a quaint little restaurant like they do in Scottsdale. We don't have some other building built that the builder says, "Well, we're going to put a restaurant in the corner of it." So you're working up, you know, it's sort of like a brick wall sometimes. So it's just a brick at a time that you take down to get it done. And I think that what you're doing is a great job, and I want the public to know, since we're now streaming, that the top lists that people have put in on the website, these people have gone time and time and time again to try to convince them to come to Goodyear. And each time they go, they have actually more information on how great Goodyear is. So it is hard, and there are people that do not think that because they just say, "I want, and I want now." And so do we want now, but it doesn't happen like that. So I don't want to discourage the team. I want the people to know how hard they're working and what you've done since you've been here in a very short period of time. And for you to have to get up tonight and give this was difficult, okay? You haven't been here that long. You did a great job, and we had the information, and now we have a plan, a different plan than we had before. And so it's not just your responsibility or your responsibility, it's this whole team. So we're on the line, too, for this. So we just want you to know we're part of that team, and we'll do whatever we can. So thank you. I really appreciate the presentation. And now, I know we have some guests tonight because this is a very special night, but we're going to have to take a break so that staff can move everything up here and council can have a little break. So I'm going to say 6:15. I added five minutes to that, so this meeting is adjourned.